Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A special meeting of the Grosse O'Tansia Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did mention that this is an actual special meeting. Wednesday is not our day, and we were not really scheduled to have our regular meeting until, I think, November the 4th. But I got a request, a special request from Kyle, who asked that we convene the Planning Commission in a special session in order that we could discuss the R1, an R1E overlay district ordinance amendment. And I honored that request. And when we agreed, when we agreed that we would, we would meet, we had some other items which we were able to pull forward on the agenda so that we could actually have a, have a complete agenda. And that will actually probably shorten our meeting in November. So, we're going to run through this. Obviously, since it's a special meeting, if you look up here at the table, you won't see nine people. You'll see five, okay? And that does constitute a quorum for us, so we can't conduct business and will conduct business. So on that note, I will move to additions and/or deletions to the agenda. Any changes?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve, support?
Support.
Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Agenda is approved. Next item are the minutes from the August 8th, I'm sorry, August 5th, Planning Commission meeting. Were there any amendments or changes to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
移到
Motion from Kurt, support?
Support.
Support from Kyle, call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, minutes are approved as submitted. Public comment is next. People who would like to speak to the commission about any item not on our agenda tonight? Not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move past that to the first item of business, which is a lot split and consolidation. The applicants are Matthew and Carol Schut of 7611 Ferry Road. The location of the lot split legally are lots 4A and 4B of Sprague's subdivision. The common location, these two lots are located about 500 feet west of East River, Ferry Road intersection, and the lots are on the north side of Ferry Road. There are, there are two addresses there, 7596 and 7622 that are adjacent. The proposal is lot 7622 has a garage that is too close to the property line. The applicant wishes to construct a brand-new house on that lot and, and wants to clear the variance so that, so that the garage no longer interrupts, interrupts construction, basically is what it boils down to. So the proposal is to actually move the property line on the adjacent property and then take that piece and combine it with this, with the second lot. And in the end, both lots are in full compliance, and there will be no variances on either one. So this remediates an existing non-conformance. The zoning on this is R1B, single-family residential. The ordinances are Article 19, general provisions, specifically 19.21, lot splits and consolidations, and Article 3, single-family residential. The process for a lot split is Planning Commission review and recommendation, which goes to the township board. The township board then reviews it and gives the final approval. I do expect we will vote on this tonight. Brian, you're up.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Chair. Once again, you have covered about 80% of my presentation before I even got out of my seat. So, I will walk through a few slides here, quick overview of the review letter I prepared that was in your agenda packets. There we go. Okay. As noted, subject properties are on north side of Ferry Road, west of East River. If my cursor will work, you can see this one here. This is 7596 that I'm highlighting, and then immediately to the west is 7622. So this is the property that the chairman referenced earlier, has this existing garage with a three-foot side yard setback, and the, the owner's overall desire is to redevelop this with a new residence and to incorporate that existing garage into it. In order to do so, the options were either go to Zoning Board of Appeals and seek a variance, or go through this process. And up to this point at least, I think this was the, this was the smoother resolution. This was definitely the path of least resistance. And, and based on my review and what I'll show you here momentarily, I believe this checks all the boxes for a simultaneous split and combination. So, as noted, this is a three-foot side lot line adjustment. So, the existing common side lot line currently sits here. It would simply be shifted three feet to the east. As noted, we're dealing with R1B, single-family residential zone district. And again, the intent here is to sort of eliminate this non-conforming side yard setback. Here's a look at the actual survey drawing. So, I tried to zoom in on it, but I wanted to show you the full detail of this drawing. So, left side, 7622, right side, 7596. And then this is the garage that we've been referencing, currently three-foot side yard setback. So what you see in this drawing is this red line is the adjustment of that additional three feet of side lot line, side yard, if you will, that would now go with 7622 as part of this request, thus providing just over a six-foot side yard setback for that garage building. Thus, the future development that is proposed there would be in full compliance with the R1B standards. This is just the table right from my letter, just to give you a quick comparison of minimum ordinance standards versus how parcel A and parcel B break down as part of this request. There's a reminder here, parcel A is 7622, parcel B is 7596. So, as you can see, just based on the simple math here, both of these parcels currently exceed all of the dimensional requirements for a lot in R1B, and they will continue to do so. So they are actually much greater in terms of width and area than what the minimum standards would be. And again, the intent here is to mitigate or eliminate that non-conforming side setback for that existing garage without any impacts to the buildability or conformity of either parcel. So, again, I know this has already been noted, but we are dealing in particular with Section 3.5. It's the Aryan Bulk Regulations for the R1B district, as well as 19.21, which provides the submittal requirements, the review standards, and the review process for land divisions. And as noted, the, the process we're, we're in front of tonight is a recommendation of the commission to the board. The board ultimately will have the final approval authority over this request. So the review criteria are outlined in greater detail in my review letter, but I did a quick summary slide for presentation purposes tonight. The standards are in 19.21C. You can see the 10 listed on the screen. In honesty, for, for the sake of brevity, I guess, so we can get on to the other stuff, the standards are all met. Everything that's a dimensional requirement is in compliance. There isn't an easement that exists on 7596, however, that is not impacted by this request. The shifting of the lot line is actually nowhere near the easement, so there's no impacts. It is in the positive. It is eliminating a non-conforming condition. And myself and staff did confirm via Township Assessor's Office that there are no special assessment districts that are impacted by the slight shift and the increase in width, and more importantly, the increase in the actual road frontage here. So, personally, again, I know this sounds overly simplistic, but I could not find any issues with the request as presented. So, that's really all I have, Mr. Chair, but I am happy to take questions because I know that was a pretty quick presentation. So, happy to help if I can.
Questions, questions for Brian? Brian, I do have one.
Of course.
The way back in the back corner of the lot, existing garage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that an issue with two existing garages?
So, it, it would be, except that the proposal is to attach the smaller garage. So the, the applicant's new proposal would be, this garage would be attached to the new residence. So that would also eliminate the non-conforming condition of two detached buildings.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Okay, let's hear from the applicant. The Schuetts, Mr. Schuett?
Yeah.
Would you like to come up and offer any comments about this?
Now, we, you pretty much presented the, the whole reason for doing the lot split was to make the garage stay where it was at. We've got existing trees. We didn't want to move the garage from where it was at to impact the, the big trees that were around it. And since it was three foot off the line, it wasn't conforming. So the easiest way to correct that was to take three foot off the other lot. So, that was the whole purpose of this.
Straightforward.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve or recommend to the township board, lot split application number 387, 7611 Ferry Road, Grosse Hill, Michigan.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Brian. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, unanimous. Thank you very much, sir. This will go in front of the township board. When do you think?
The 28th, I believe, we can get it on there. Yep.
28th?
Yep.
Okay. The 20, yeah, the township board has final approvals, so this will come up in front of them at that point. We will submit a recommendation, findings of fact, to Kyle to present to the board so that it'll move forward. Thank you, sir. Okay. Let's move to the discussion items, of which we have, we have three. The first is the R1E ordinance amendment. This is a discussion only of, of a potential change to the R1E overlay district standard. Article 3 of single-family residential specifies, or Section 3.55 regulations. That particular section of the ordinance requires that any new single-family residential lots created via lot split or as part of a subdivision plan must meet R1E dimensional standards. These dimensional standards exceed those of the, whatever the underlying zoning is in that district. The proposal is to allow one lot split to be excluded from the R1E overlay dimensional This, this topic came up back almost 11 months ago or something, January, I guess, okay? And was, was discussed, and Kyle asked that it be brought up again tonight. If there is a, a strong position by the Planning Commission that we would want to, to move forward on this, then that would initiate the formal process to modify the zoning ordinance, and that would take place over several meetings in, in the near future. Consequently, you know, since this is a discussion, it's simply looking for opinions, and there would be no vote on the matter tonight. So, on that note, I'll stop. Kyle, would you please introduce?
Yes, of course. So yeah, thank you for, for this time and for having this discussion item. I'm glad we're all here today and we can have this discussion like this, and we have the experts here also to help us out with some of it. So, as, as John set up, as he always does very well, you know, we were looking at different ways to, to look at R1E. And one of the reasons why R1E exists is to stop developers from buying up broad swathes of land and, and creating lots of lots that would conform with our underlying zoning. The reason why I feel this is an elegant solution is it would only be for folks that want to build one lot. And so, this isn't necessarily a perfect example, but I'm glad we had the applicant here today. That lot split went to R1B standards because it was two lots that he was able to work with. But if that was one lot, and he wanted to split one off to meet the, the R1B underlying zoning, he would have had to go through R1E standards, and that would have made a much bigger lot that he might not have been able to do. Actually, I don't know if that's true or not. You all might be able to help me with that. But basically, it, it just shows why I think having the ability to split one lot off and, and develop one, one, one lot that would fit, fit our underlying zoning, I think would be a really good solution to this. One thing that came up when we talked about this before was to have more information about how many lots we had. So, we did have the folks that were looking at the master plan look at that. They weren't able to narrow it down as, as well as they could. But if I recall the presentation from them on R1E, it was about 300 lots that, that would possibly be benefit from this. A lot of those obviously would not, you know, I mean, I would argue most are not going to go through this process of splitting off a lot, but I think it shows that it wouldn't affect too many people. I think it would just allow for infill development that fits our underlying zoning in, in small cases like, like the one that came before the board. But there are a few others too that I think could help and help people do, do what they want to do with, with their, with their property. So, I will set it up in that way unless folks have questions, but, but that's kind of why I wanted to bring this forward, and I'm grateful for the time.
Sure. Okay. Well, thanks for the introduction. Brian, would you care to comment, please, on what you have up on the screen?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thanks again. So, the intent here was obviously R1E, we, we had a lot of discussion over the past year. We had a, we had a land division request that was before you, that ultimately was rejected because it did not meet R1E, and variances that were needed were not granted. That spurred even more conversation amongst the commission. And so what, what we prepared was really a, a very simplistic draft that was an attempt to kind of bridge the gap between the, the two sides of the discussion. There were certainly, at least from my impression of the, the dialogue we've had, there were some people who, I think, and they may have been residents, I'm not necessarily pinning this on the commission, but there were people who just wanted to get rid of R1E overlay altogether. And then there were people who didn't want to touch it at all because it essentially, you know, has served its purpose. So the idea here was to create some allowance, but, but generally speaking, to maintain the R1E standards for those who were looking to develop larger chunks of land into, into more properties, really. So, so the idea with this would be, as this is drafted, the, the residents on South Point who were denied last year, or early this year, whatever the timeframe was, would, would that example being one, there are others, they would be allowed to create one new buildable lot that met the conventional zone standard. So in that case, it was R1B. So that process or that project would have been viable under this particular standard. Whereas, an attempt to come in and develop a site condominium with five, six, seven, or more units would not. That would still be subject to R1E and the larger lot requirements.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian? Okay, let's find out if anybody in the audience has a thought on this. Seeing no hands, I'll bring it back to the table, and we'll just run around the table. Dan, your initial thoughts?
One thing that's important about this is, you know, it goes back to thinking about density. I, I'm not saying I have an answer to this, but this could potentially increase density on island. And one of the challenges that we have here on the island is, Kurt, we basically have one and a half bridges. I'm saying half because of toll bridge. The only, the largest view you can get across is a pickup truck, you know? So, so with the possibility, like just right now, they identified, there's possibility of 300 lots. That's 300 possible lots that, that, that someone can go through the process to get it, get it revised into a buildable lot, the same as the, the case that we reviewed earlier this year. And I know there's, I know there's people out there looking for lots. So, just something to think about. It's been in place, I'm not sure, I'm curious, how many, how many years has, has the R1E been in place?
Since 2000.
Since 2000, it's 24 years? So, it's helped keep the density down the island, and I'm just wondering, I just want to make sure, anyone, anyone looking to change this, we are going to be changing the density on the island. We're, we're going to be making the density greater.
Thank you, Dan. Brian?
Um, I don't have much opinion at the moment. I still need to research a little bit more about it, so thank you for the opportunity.
Sure. Mr. Kobelak?
Yeah, I think when we last talked about this, we, I think we had the entire complement of the commission here. It was clear that we had multiple thoughts and multiple ideas. And I guess through the chair, I guess, Brian, what led you to come up with this solution? Like, was this prompted by whom?
Again, this was just an effort to try to bridge the gap where, relatively speaking, there was a lot of anecdotal support for the request that had to be denied last year, but at the same time, there was support to sort of retain the overall integrity and impact of R1E. So, as I kind of said earlier, this was an attempt to sort of bridge that gap, allow for potentially some relatively minor changes, whereas we would still keep it in whole for larger quote-unquote "development," if you will. So the, the idea here is really, again, that on a, somebody has an excessively large lot based on underlying zone, they could potentially split that into just the two lots. But any more than that, and we would retain the larger lot standards, thus protecting, again, the density, the trip generation, the natural features, everything else that was sort of rolled into the, the purpose of R1E.
So instead of it being as strict as it was, you're giving a little bit of movement.
Just a little.
Right? I mean, because I was, I mean, I think R1E, I was on the Planning Commission and on the township board at the time. And I think what we discussed at that meeting, the most recent meeting about this, was, you know, has it worked? Was it successful? I'm still going to say it has been successful, right? I mean, after living here my entire life, I think it's worked out well. When we sat down with the full commission, everybody had a different approach to this, and my belief was, is that we were going to come back, not, not part of the master plan, we were going to come back and actually address this and basically break it all out, right? With Mr. Fruschi, Mr. Rathol, they had their commentary. I mean, we all had our thoughts. The fact that this is coming up right now, kind of on the fly, seems a little bit, just mystifies me a little bit because we said that we were going to come back and discuss it as a whole. I understand we are today, but we only have five, five members here. You know, I guess it's, it's, it's another component to talk about, another way to look at it. But again, I, I got the, the feeling that we wanted to break this out and actually go into detail, and then determine what type of language to put in proposed language. So to me, this is, it's, it's surely a, a good effort. I'm not suggesting it's not. And I'm not saying it's disingenuine. It just seems like it's kind of, it wasn't what we all agreed upon when we last talked about this issue. So, I guess through the chair again, I, when we get to this issue, it would be good to have the full complement here because this is zoning, and it's a big step for this township to take.
Thank you, Kurt.
Can I say something on that? My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, anyone here, was, R1E was discussed last time as a part of the master plan process. So I know that's going to be our discussion item, discussion items here later. But my, my interpretation of what happened there is, R1E's staying from, from, from that process. You know, it's, I mean, the actual plan, the actual master plan does not decide what to do with R1E. That'll be later after, after the master plan happens, but that's my understanding. So, part of why I thought it was good to bring this forward is while R1E's staying in some form or another, this again allows some flexibility within that, is, is what I feel. So, and it also gives some sense of, of, of the actual demand. I know Mr. Boggs heard that 300 number and was a little bit worried about density. But for me, I think it'll show that of the 300 people, there's, you're not going to have 300 people come in the day that something like this would be passed and asking for a lot split. I think what you're going to find is, you're going to have the one or two cases that are going to come forward, maybe in a year, to, to allow something like this move forward. So I think it'll show as the, as the overall zoning is, is done, that, that, you know, the, the, that, that this could be a, a good approach forward. So, that's why I, I thought it would be good to bring this forward now, and that was my opinion on that. But I, I hear you, Mr. Kobelak, on, on how it feels to you. So, thank you for expressing that.
Thank you, Kyle. As far as my opinion is concerned on this, first, absolutely, something like this, where you're talking about a fundamental change in an ordinance that's been in place for 20 years, 25 years, 23 years, whatever, requires the full participation of the Planning Commission. Five people, wow, it's nice to have opinions, may not, we may not reflect the majority, okay? We need everybody here. So that's the first thing. So, when this eventually comes back around, you know, we have to make certain that all voices on the Planning Commission are heard. Second point, my understanding of this was that we were going to wait until we got substantial data from the master plan and, and recommendations about how to proceed on this. Well, what's happened on the master plan? The master plan housing section focuses on smaller houses. That's, they want, you know, that, that the community needs a smaller, a smaller-sized house, okay? That, and, but that is a distinct issue separate from lot size. The, the gist of, of, of the recommendation that came from the Smith Group, which we will be talking about, coming here in, on November the 4th, is, does not, does not say take out or modify R1E as, as is proposed here. What it proposes instead is to look at R1E, the, what's called the cluster housing element of that ordinance, where if a large lot comes in, you know, the houses can be compressed where the, where the number of houses is defined by the lot size, but, but modify the cluster housing, modify the clustering housing portion of that ordinance so that whatever houses are built are, are in the direction of the goal of having the smaller houses, not the mansions. That was the recommendation that currently is, is in the, in the master plan implementation section. Now, again, we're going to be talking about that, but at no point did they say abandon it or change it because they recognized in here the things that, Dan, you were talking about. The bridge issues, the density issues, the, the... The bridge issues, the density issues, the, 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 the change in population, okay? So the master plan really requires, um, well, it, it, it focuses the R1E discussion in a different direction entirely than what, than what is presented here. Okay? Let's, let's take this a step further. Anytime we as a commission work on an ordinance, okay? We don't make assumptions. We look before we leap. We don't assume we know what the effect is going to be. We know what the effect is going to be because we analyze it, we look at it, we focus on data, okay? And it makes, and, and in this case, we do not have data that says what the impact of that, this one change would be. We don't know. We think we know, but that's not the same. When you're looking out for the overall good of the community, you have to know, okay? And from my perspective, we don't know. Or I don't know, let's put it that way. So, you know, I, uh, without, without seeing hard data and having the discussion, knowing that you, that we have the facts so that we are absolutely confident that when we roll out an ordinance change, this is the good for the community, not for one individual, not for two individuals, not for windfall profits, for, for five people. That's not what we're here for. We're here for the overall good of the community. And, and I am not convinced that we have enough information to even, even begin that discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm just a little confused. I thought this was just a discussion as opposed to like any action, so it's like, um...
Well, what, what I'm telling, what I'm telling you is my position relative to this potential change. I'm not, we're not going to vote on it tonight, by any means, but, but...
Maybe was anyone suggesting that it would be? I was just, I felt like there's some, like, there was like, like it was proposed as like...
We're not, this is what, this is what, what you see on the screen is what is proposed as a potential change. And I am commenting on that potential change.
Okay, thank you.
On my opinion on that. So, so the bottom line on this is I would like to see us get through the master plan process like we talked about, ascertain exactly what data we need to collect, okay? So that we can make whatever the appropriate decision is, like we do for any other ordinance change. And so that, that basically is my position. Uh, any other comments? I think it was good that we've, we've had this discussion, you know, we've got, you know, I really wish we would have had four other voices here, but, you know, this isn't the last time this is going to come up. Uh, we'll, uh, talk about it again.
I had, I had one additional, one additional comment. Just, you know, um, we talked about, you know, possibility of one or two people coming forward this, as a local architect, I, I really feel there'll be a lot more people coming, coming, come in with that because it gives people opportunity to have buildable lots. So I'm not saying that there's a problem with this density, I'm just bringing up the fact that, that it could definitely increase the density and I, I think a lot of people will do that. Right now, right now, there's, it's a lot easier to, to develop one lot. To develop a subdivision or multiple lots involves putting roads in, utilities in. Those are much more difficult to develop and, and there hasn't been many added on island, island at all. But individual lots, they're a lot easier to develop. That's it.
Yeah, we've had, uh, well, it was one of the things that came out of the master plan was, uh, they, they determined from 2010 to 2023, you know, the fact we have had a substantial amount of, of building done and essentially on infill lots, on existing lots that, that were created, uh, in subdivisions that over time, you know, developers have, have been working toward. So, um, development has moved on. Okay, uh, any other comments?
Um, I'll just say finally, um, I'm just grateful that we were able to bring this forward to the planning commission here and get this out in the public because before it'd just been you, me and Jay, I think that had seen this actual change. So at least it's out there, uh, folks can see as a possible way forward on this. Um, I will just say personally, having discussed this for that at least 11 month timeframe, probably longer, um, you know, there, there are, as, as, as folks have mentioned, other voices on this planning commission, some of which, and, and in the public, some of which wanted to do away with R1E. Um, and for me, this feels like a compromise, um, that, that could move this, this question forward, uh, and see how things go. We've talked about data, we talked about data a long time ago. I know I've asked for the data, asked for the planners to try and find it. They did bring some of that forward. Um, and, uh, I, I would just say, um, I'm, I'm grateful the master plan process is moving forward. Um, that's a, a huge bright spot, I think, for our community and what, what could bring for the future. Um, but as these zoning changes come forward, coming out of the master plan process, I just strongly encourage the planning commission to be open to new ways to do things, uh, to not allow, uh, um, things to block, um, uh, slight changes or, or things that would make things easier for folks to build in, in places that, 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 uh, that meet the underlying zoning. Um, so anyway, I'll leave it there, but I'm grateful for the time and, and for folks coming together on this, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Kyle. Uh, discussion is good. I mean, this is, uh, one of the reasons why we're here. Okay, on that note, we'll move on. Uh, believe it or not, we're going to have a discussion about the chicken ordinance. Uh, the, uh, the township has received, uh, citizen requests to keep chickens. Uh, these have been denied. Uh, section 19.16 of the zoning ordinance entitled Keeping of Animals specifically prohibits that use. Given the number of requests and the fact that a limited number of chicken coops are already in place, albeit outside of, uh, the ordinance, uh, the township board asked that the planning commission kind of revisit this prohibition. To this end, the township manager, community development manager, and township planner, uh, drafted zoning ordinance amendment for our review. It allows for the keeping of chickens with, with, with a lot of restrictions, okay? Um, this will, this will be discussed tonight so that, that we can provide input into, into that ordinance. Should this move forward, uh, again, this would be a change to the zoning ordinance, so we would start the formal process, um, you know, whenever that fits with, uh, the schedule. Uh, there will be no vote on it tonight.
Talk about chickens.
I'm going to come back up to the podium if you don't mind. I did put the, again, the draft on the screen here for you. So, um, where we're at at this is, is as John mentioned, um, we were sort of directed to at least come up with a draft, um, to present to, to you all for some feedback. Um, again, this is by no means a final product. We're not asking you to act on anything. We're, we're not at that point yet. Uh, but we did want to have something to present to you and we did try to move this forward as, as quickly as we could because there are a number of residents that do have chickens and, um, this is the kind of thing we want to sort of try to get addressed sooner rather than later. So, um, what you have in front of you, uh, is a draft to the zoning ordinance, specifically as John mentioned, section 19.16. So right now, that ordinance prohibits keeping of livestock anywhere except the public rec district and the public rec district is only centennial farm. So kind of logical, centennial farm, yes, they can have things there that you can't have elsewhere. So what we have attempted to do is put in, uh, an exception where you could seek approval. Uh, it would be through community development department, so it would be a permit through community development, uh, where you could keep chickens, um, with, as John mentioned, a, a number of regulations behind it. So one of the things that we wanted to do was so far, we've tied it to the, uh, the owner occupant as opposed to the property. The idea being that if somebody has chickens and then that property is approved for the keeping of chickens, but then they sell that property, uh, we didn't think, we, we wanted some assurances that the new owner would then also ensure that they would comply with all of these regulations. So the idea right now is that any approval would be for the person, i.e. the owner, the occupant, if it's a rental, um, and then that permit would go with them. So if they left the property, the permit would then no longer be for that property. And if the new owner or new occupant wanted to also then keep chickens, they'd have to come back in and go through the process. So we felt like that was a fair approach, that we didn't have people just inheriting chickens, thinking they knew what they were doing, not fully understanding all of the ramifications behind that. So that was a procedural element. Um, we do have a, a number of things in here I want to just touch upon. So in order to do this, again, this is a draft, but this would only be allowed as accessory to a detached, single-family use in single-family zoning. So that's the way we've drafted it at this point in time, so it would not be allowable in a multiple family setting. It would not be allowable, uh, at a residence on McComb Street. So it would only be allowed for single-family homes in single-family districts. Um, wouldn't be something you could do on a vacant lot, that kind of a thing. We wanted to ensure that it was actually accessory, that people were there. Um, we did put in a six-chicken maximum based on the research we did, based on the other ordinances I've drafted and we've reviewed. Um, that seemed to be a, a fair number. There's not an exact science here. That's one thing that for sure could go up or down as commission and ultimately the board see fit. We just didn't want to go too far. Um, I didn't want to come in with the first draft that said you could have 20 chickens and all of a sudden things are going haywire pretty fast. So we went with six. Um, every ordinance related to this topic I've ever drafted or read, truthfully, and I'm sure there are some that, uh, would, would contradict that, uh, roosters are always prohibited. So that's, that to me should be a must in this community. We're allowing this as a residential accessory use. Uh, the roosters just, uh, end up creating a nuisance for, for neighborhoods and neighbors. So we would definitely prohibit, uh, roosters. We would also prohibit the slaughtering of chickens. So like any, um, you know, any animal, I don't know that it's really a pet in this case, but I'm sure some people view it that way and I'm sure it is. I'm not, uh, not trying to slander any chicken keepers out there, sure they treat them just as well as I treat my dogs, but we don't want them to be slaughtered on property. Eventually they're going to come to the end of their lifespan. Um, we want to make sure that they're not being slaughtered, that they are properly taken care of when they are, um, at the end of their life. And there are, um, I'm going to get to one of the things, the closing provision in here is tied back to the, um, Department of Agricultural, Department of Agriculture's generally accepted agricultural management practices. And there's provisions within that document for, um, how to take care of whether euthanizing or whether they die on their own, how, how you're supposed to handle disposing of chickens that have passed. So, um, we want to make sure that's not something occurring on a residential property. We are requiring, uh, an enclosure, um, in essence, for lack of a better term, a chicken coop. So, uh, we have put forth maximum square footage and maximum height, just as you would with any other type of accessory building. We did put in basically an exception here where, uh, this would not count against your one allowable detached accessory building. So in other words, you could still have a shed and then you could have a chicken coop. You could have a detached garage and you could have a chicken coop. Um, we didn't feel that it was necessarily fair to hold that restriction so then anybody that does have a shed, does have a detached garage, they're automatically excluded from a chicken coop because you can't have a second accessory building. So that was an exception we put in. Um, we do have provisions currently for yard location and setbacks. Those would match your current accessory building regulations. We did have, um, internally, uh, we had a lot of discussion on where to allow this. Uh, more specifically, the rear yards are the obvious choices on internal lots, um, but not every yard in this community has a rear yard. We also have waterfront lots, those don't have rear yards. So, uh, that was why we incorporated a side yard component. I don't know that that would be, um, that that would work in a lot of instances just because people have limited space within side yards, but that's why we put inside or rear yard. Um, that's another point though, that I think commission, ultimately board, um, the yard placement could be something that's very easily changed, um, if we felt there's too much impact or if you wanted to broaden it. Um, it, we could add waterfront yards if we wanted to, that would be an option. We just went, again, kind of played this a little conservative. So side or rear is the way it is currently written. Um, do need within said structure, uh, we need protections from, uh, that will prevent vermin, rodents, et cetera, from, uh, or even, uh, something more, uh, heinous for the chickens themselves, you know, any predators. We want to make sure that they're kept safe. Also want to make sure that, uh, any, any food, uh, or any other items that are associated with the chickens are kept, um, buttoned up and safe so that we don't start attracting nuisances. We don't want to have mice and rats digging into the chicken feed, uh, whatever it might be. So within this coop, you will have to, um, protect that as well. Uh, we are also requiring, in addition to the structure, the enclosure, the chicken coop, uh, a fenced-in area so that they can also, um, roam free to a degree. Uh, we don't want them running around neighborhoods. I have heard that there were a couple that, uh, there may have been a, someone in this room that had to chase down some chickens from getting hit by cars or something like that. So, um, we want to make sure that there's an area they can roam, uh, but that it's protected and they, they can't get out. So we are, we did put forth a, uh, a requirement for a fenced-in area. We do have provisions, again, to try to protect neighboring properties. Uh, we, we wrote in that it can't be, the fencing area can't be any closer than six feet to a property line. So if it's in your side yard, six feet, if it's in your rear yard, six feet, um, those types of things. And it would also, we, unlike the, the accessory building where we wrote in an, an exception, um, we did maintain that your fence for your chicken enclosure would still be bound by the current fence requirements of the ordinance. So this was another one where, again, we've gone back and forth and the idea of somebody trying to do a, a full fence enclosure just to say it's for their chickens, but all of a sudden now they fenced in their waterfront yard where it's not otherwise permitted, we thought that was too slippery of a slope where there were a lot of potential, um, people that could sort of take advantage, not that they would, but they could. So, um, we did maintain that you still have to comply with your, your basic conventional fence standards. Um, we wrote in a spacing requirement, so your fenced-in area and your, uh, your enclosure would have to be at least 40 feet from a neighboring residence. So that's a spacing requirement, not a setback requirement. So that would function much the same way, uh, in R1A and R1B zone districts. Residents have to have 18-foot spacing between them. That was the idea here was that we don't want people putting their, you know, putting their chickens out in their yards where it's too close to a neighbor if the neighbor doesn't like it, is offended by it, thinks it's a nuisance, whatever the case might be. We wanted some protections for those neighbors. Uh, another one, and this is one I've incorporated again in the other ordinances I've worked on, um, that the, the eggs, these are, these are laying chickens. These are not, you're not meant to eat these chickens, they're, you're meant to consume their eggs. Um, we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that the, the eggs are for the consumption of the owner occupants in this case and that they are not intended to be a for-sale business. We don't want people lining up in neighborhoods to buy eggs from their neighbor. We don't want it to become a commercial enterprise in a residential zone district. So, uh, we put that in here as well. Um, and then sort of a catch-all is really that, uh, property has to be maintained clean and orderly condition, can't generate offensive odors. Obviously that's another thing where, um, the owners of these chickens really will have to maintain the property, the chicken coop, the fenced-in area, keep things in, in good order so that we don't wind up with a nuisance-like situation. And then as I alluded to earlier, uh, the last provision in here would be that they have to be, um, kept in compliance, uh, the chickens themselves, uh, the enclosures where they're kept, et cetera. Um, there's a, a full document, uh, from the Michigan Department of Agriculture that speaks to these gamps and we wanted to incorporate that as well, sort of another catch-all because it does talk about the care for the animal, the maintenance of the facility they're housed in. And as I mentioned earlier, the disposal, if you will, that sounds kind of tacky, I apologize, but the disposal when they're kind of at the end of their lifespan. So we thought that was another one and again, uh, I have used that in other ordinances for other communities as well. So that's where we stand right now. Just want to reiterate, this is the first cut, so, um, this is, nothing is in stone with respect to this. We've already, Ross and I got a number of comments from John already, so some of those we're, we're still kind of working on. We're, we know there's a lot of things in here that still need to be, uh, worked out, but we did want to put this in front of a bigger group, try to get some more feedback, see what you guys think, what you like, what you don't like, what's missing, et cetera. So, um, at that point, this is where we're happy to take questions or comments.
Okay. Um, Brian, uh, how about we pause right now and let's hear from the audience?
For sure.
Uh, would either of you folks like to speak to the, this chicken ordinance?
One right back over here.
Oh, in the back? Oh, come on up. Come on, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Who's that?
Uh, sir, your name?
Bill Hile, I live on East River.
Okay, your address?
29228 East River.
Okay, thank you.
Bear with me if you would for a minute. This started off, I had knee surgery on April 30th and one of the physical therapists who came to my house happened to have a chicken. This chicken has a cage. You know how a hamster runs on a treadmill? Well, I want you to think of a small beach ball, something a little bigger than this. It's yellow. And she gets in that chicken, the chicken gets in that thing and runs around the house, the yard, and has made friends with our biggest dog of 135 pounds, Leon Burger. And I wanted to show you a picture of her rolling her ball up against the dog's fenced area, and the dog's up against the fence, and they're nosing each other. But, I want to be in compliance. I didn't plan on having a chicken. I can assure you that when that bird passes away, my wife knows how to ethically dispose of things. And, we feed it well. It happens, she likes purple grapes, and I give her seven or eight a day, and she knows me and makes her a little noise to know she wants some more grapes. But, I'm running for township trustee, and I want to be in compliance as best I can. But, it's, just give me a copy of that stuff. I don't think we're doing anything wrong. We don't have a building. The bird lives in a birdcage, and every other day, she gives us an egg. Now, that's the story, but I want to be compliant. That's why I want copy. I want to be proper.
Sounds to me more like a pet.
It is. It is.
No, and we didn't, you know, this wasn't directed at a pet, for sure. So, that's a very good point you're raising.
Thank you. People have come by, get a chuckle out of it. I don't know how I lost the picture. I had it saved, but it disappeared.
That's okay. I think we get, I think we get the gist of it. So.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Hile. Any other, oh, yes, yes, ma'am. Please come on up.
Miki Bartlett, Envoy. So, I grew up eating fresh eggs. We had a chicken coop. We moved from the city to the country and had a chicken coop. And, that was our big Sunday breakfast, right, to go out and get the fresh eggs. And so, living here, I used to go out there and get fresh eggs every Sunday, and my source dried up. So, just wondering if you can maybe think about letting them sell them as well, because with six chickens, they're not going to get a lot of eggs. They're not going to get a lot of traffic. But, it gives them a couple extra bucks, and you get fresh eggs. And, I know that our, it's so funny, because we moved from the city, right? We didn't know what we were doing, but we learned. But, we treated our animals a lot better than the commercial industries and what they do with the animals. And they don't see the sunshine, and they don't get free range and everything else. So, I think it's nice to be able to let people do that here, and maybe to consider allowing them to sell them as wild.
Just help me on this. How many eggs do you get from six chickens per day or per week?
So, so, when I was young, my dad was crazy, right? It's like, you didn't go and get six chickens. You went and got 50 chickens, right? And a couple roosters, too, that coming from the city, were like, what the heck is that noise? So, for us, we always had like a great big basket of eggs. With six, I think they probably lay an egg like every other day, I think Bill was just saying. Every other day. And, I actually had to look it up, that you don't need a rooster, because we always had the roosters. But, they're not going to sell a lot of eggs with sex, right? But, it's still nice that they can do that. And then, if you don't wash them when they lay them, they last longer, because you're not washing that coating off. So, they can actually sell them for a while, too.
They'll produce eggs without a rooster?
Yeah. And you know what? I had to look it up.
Is the quiet, any difference, anything change at all, or just normal as usual?
I don't think so. But, you know what? If you crack a store-bought egg open, and a fresh one, there's a big difference in them, the color of the yolk. They say it's a lot more healthier for that free-range egg. Plus, you know what? You're feeding the chickens. And, they don't, you know, they're not a high-maintenance animal. I mean, like I said, we went there and didn't know what we were doing. But, we would go out and feed them and take care of them. And, really simple. And, you know, if my kids were little, it's something fun to teach them how to take care of the animals, too. And it's just an easy one for them to manage. We also had a whole lot of other things there, like horses, ducks, geese, everything else. But, the chickens were fairly easy to take care of.
Well, sitting here as Chair of the Planning Commission, this is the first time in 32 years, I've learned something about chickens, you know? This is a first.
Makes a good Sunday.
But, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, any other hands? Okay, we'll bring it back to the table and have a discussion about this. I have a bit of advantage on you, because as Brian said, this was run past me. And I submitted a number of comments. Not all my comments made it. So, I think, before we go to everybody else, why don't I talk about what I think needs to be done? Perhaps it would provide some guidance to everybody else. First, you know, we, you specified the height, the maximum height of 10 feet. 10 feet, and the way our ordinances read for building height, is halfway up of a slope. So, if someone builds a slope, sloped roof, the actual maximum height, it's not going to be 10 feet. It's going to be 16 feet or 15 feet or something like that, because we measure from the middle of the slope. The recommendation I made was, is that, is that we don't want something 15 feet tall. 10 feet's fine. So, it ought to be written, it ought to be written in such a fashion that 10 feet is the peak height, period. So, that was my, that was one suggestion. Second suggestion was more about animal care. You know, we say in the back about we may have an enclosure. Well, you know, we've all seen the commercial farms where chickens are confined to a two-by-two pen, and they stay there, and that's it. Okay? And, it's struck me that we're not commercial. And in fact, you know, if we're going to have a chicken coop, there ought to be some opportunity for that enclosed, for them to get outside and be in an enclosed area. And, so, rather than saying "may," I think it should be required, and it should, an area should be specified, much like Brian was saying about, about not having someone use it to manipulate a large fence. You know, put the enclosed area, maybe, I don't know, 60 feet like the pen, so that they can get outside. And further, the pen needs to be not only side-enclosed, it needs to be top-enclosed, in large measure, because raccoons and the like will climb right over the top and clean out the chicken coop. So, it needs to be a complete screened-in type enclosure, that's sturdy. Another thing I was concerned about was that we were not descriptive enough about, about, "Structure shall be constructed so as to prevent vermin and rodents from being harbored underneath." Okay? That leaves a lot of open territory. I think that we should be specific, both in the enclosure and in the coop, with respect to a rat wall. So, that, so that makes it very clear what the requirement is. So, it takes the ambiguity out of it. So, I'd like to see that added. I also have a bit of a dimension issue with this. You know, I understand the intent of the 40 feet away from an adjacent resident. But, if I happen to be living on the Thurofer Canal, okay, and I'm in a subdivision, I have no side yard that allows that to be constructed. I can't put it in, I can't put it in the front yard along the canal, because that's not allowed. I can't put it in side yard, because the houses are only, what, what, 16, 18 feet apart, which means in effect that that part of the population is excluded. So, you know, I thought that perhaps we ought to reconsider that from the standpoint of where we allow swimming pools, for example. Okay? Whether, where there's an opportunity to place it up in the waterfront portion of the backyard, well, of the canal yard, canal side. But, back it off so that it's centered in the property. It's not in the vision triangles. It's 40 feet away from the property, and it basically puts it in their backyard. Okay? So, I think there's some, you know, we shouldn't put this up so it excludes that portion of the population. I also was concerned about somebody coming in and getting a permit. Okay? And then, what happens? Well, it gets built. How does it get built? Is it built to a standard that we set in the ordinance? I think that there ought to be, they're up before a permit is issued. The coop ought to go up, the fence ought to go up, the inspection ought to be made, construction validated, and then a permit issued. Okay? So, the order, the order is reversed from what we otherwise would normally do. That is what, that is what stops corners from getting cut. I think most of those are my suggestions from, from the notes that I provided earlier. Maybe some of them weren't, but those were my thoughts. So, I think there's room, there's room for modification on this. At that point, I'm done with my chicken comments. Dan?
A few comments. I have limited experience with chickens, but I did live in the country at one time. And, you know, from what I've seen, chickens are relatively quiet, don't cause much of a nuisance. Actually, my biggest concern is people that want to, you know, experiment with hen chickens. They're not, they're new to it. Is, you know, you have to have a really good enclosure, because otherwise, you're going to notice all of a sudden that chickens are missing all of a sudden. Because, not necessarily rodents, you know, other animals, they'll dig under, they'll dig to get under the chicken coop, they'll go over top of the chicken coop, they'll find any way possible to get in there. You have to have them pretty secure to keep predators out. I just would hate that someone says, "I'm going to have my, you know, fresh, free-roamed eggs," and put a coop up without any, you know, coop up without any detailed standards or being secure. And all of a sudden, a week later, they got two chickens as opposed to six chickens. You know, I just.
That's not your main.
It has to be, has to be somewhat secure. And maybe we have to, I'm not saying detailed instructions on how to build a chicken coop, but maybe just verbiage saying how they need to be secure and protected from predators. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Kyle?
Yeah, this is, well, a few things. I agree with Ms. Bartlett. I think with six chickens, I wouldn't worry about the commercial prohibition. And I agree that, that folks that have extra eggs should be able to sell it to their neighbors if they want to. And, I'm thinking through what folks are bringing up about the, about the different standards to put in. I mean, what folks have said, just so folks don't know, is absolutely right. Here on this island, there are a lot of predators for chickens. Mink are one of the worst ones, and they're able to get in in ways that even more secure chicken coops in other places aren't able to do it. Everything I've seen about folks that own chickens on the island, they, it's a real trial and error type thing. Even if you do the best you can, predators find a way to get in, it seems like. So, I don't know if there's language you can put in to stop that, is what I'm struggling with. And I worry, the more restrictions we put in place, the harder it's going to be for folks to comply with this, and the less likely they'll be to be coming to us for this sort of thing. So, that's where I'm back and forth on this. So, sorry not to give definitive answers, but that's just kind of what I'm thinking as we're going through this.
Thanks, Kyle. Brian?
I'd say I agree with Ms. Bartlett's and Kyle's comments, and nothing else at this time.
Thank you. Kurt?
Yeah, for all the years I've been on the island, I thought there was an ordinance that actually regulated chickens. Because I will tell you that, off the top of my head, I can tell you 15 homes that have them right now. I've been to their houses. I've seen their chickens roaming freely. Some have roosters, some don't. One of the questions I'd have for this, and maybe this is, again, through Brian, I know that some folks also keep ducks, because some people like duck eggs, right? So, if you take a look at the ordinance, it's not spot zoning. But, if you look at this, is it just chickens, right? Let's say, can I have, can I have six ducks in my backyard? And the answer is, why not? Right? And someone's going to say, well, they quack louder than a rooster, whatever a rooster does, right? But, you look at this, and basically, if you take the keeping of animals, we're talking about, you know, two, or B talks about equine, and then we're adding D, which is talking about chickens. So, again, C talks about the keeping of non-domesticated animals. Well, if you could have, I mean, there was a canal house that had rabbits. They had probably 25 rabbits. They would, they would generate rabbits, they would sell their rabbits. Do we regulate that on the island? Well, that's a domesticated pet. It can be. So, does it meet C, or does it not meet C? But, if you think about it, if you're having rabbits, basically, these criteria would almost be identical. I mean, again, you know, you can see how this, you know, and so, we think about ducks, you think about rabbits, you think about everything else, and you go, okay, are we going too deep in this? But, you just, I think you have to be careful, because I know there's one family on the island that has ducks, and people like duck eggs.
Just real quick in response, we were asked to prepare a keeping of chickens ordinance.
I know, I know.
Not ducks, not rabbits.
And that's what I'm saying. So, the question is.
We prepared a keeping of chickens ordinance as directed.
Yeah.
Perhaps, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Now, perhaps the question, the right question, right question wasn't asked.
Well, and I'm not, I think this works. I just, I don't want someone to come back and then say, well, who's going to regulate the ducks, right? So, I think six is too small of a number, just from what I know from the families that have ducks. The commercial, I think what you want to do is you want to say that it's not, again, people selling their eggs, putting a sign in front of their house and saying we have fresh eggs. Does it really impact the island and the residential community? Probably not. And, I am grateful that whoever put this together didn't ask that there be a permit from the Department of Agriculture, because that would be almost impossible to do. So, I think that's, it's a lot better not to have that tight restriction on it. So, that's my comments.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Any comments from Ross, you or Brian?
I think that the permitting would be done through the Community Development Department, but it would be in accordance to GAMS. And, the permitting process just helps us understand where exactly, where we have locations of where all these chickens are, because like Mr. Koldiak said, there are, you know, probably a couple dozen residents that have them. So, we just want to be able to keep track of that, and, you know, just make sure we know where they are. So. And then, to the number, it's historically been told the residents to keep up to six. So, we just kind of kept with that. And, that seems like a universal number from other communities as well, so.
Okay. Any further comments on this? Did we provide direction, or did we provide confusion?
Both.
Okay. Well, perhaps, you know, the officers could meet with you guys, and we could review ordinances like we typically do, and that might prove helpful. So, maybe you could arrange for us to get together, and then we can, we can plow through the ordinance and take into account the factors that have been brought up. We can help.
Brian, did you say both?
Absolutely.
Did you?
He was not bashful about it either.
No, no, no. I thought, I just don't know if it was Ross or Brian, so I just want to confirm.
Okay, that completes that. Ross? Let's have a little brief discussion about where we stand on the master plan, and what the Planning Commission can expect, and what your expectations of the Planning Commission are.
Sir, sent out drafts to you all on Monday, I believe, Monday or Tuesday. So, that draft will be presented, we'll be talking about that draft on November 4th. We're still making edits. Met with Mr. Schweickert yesterday for two hours, felt like two hours. We were talking for a while. Still making a lot of edits to it. So, the Planning Commission can decide to authorize distribution of the, or to recommend to the Township Board to authorize the distribution of that draft with edits. So, if we, you know, you guys all have a few weeks to look over the draft. If you guys have any comments that would like to be incorporated into, into that document on November 4th, you can authorize the draft with edits to be made to the draft. So.
When will those edits be coming out, do you think, Ross? Ross?
The edits for, what do you, could you?
Josh?
Oh, yeah. So, the edits that we discussed, I made, I spent the majority of my day today making edits to that, incorporating your edits. There's still, I'm anticipating there's going to be probably three discussion topics related to housing that's mentioned in that plan that we'll discuss at Planning Commission. And I'll be sure to communicate with the Commission about those topics. It'll be included in our agenda for that meeting.
Okay, that's, that's perfect.
Yep.
Okay, so you will be issuing another version with the edits for everybody to look at.
Yep.
I would suggest based, you know, having, having deep dived into the master plan, while all of it is important, from a Planning Commission perspective, the housing section and land use sections are the most critical for the things that we typically deal with. So, if you're limited on time, I would say focus, focus your efforts in those. So if you, if you're limited on time, I would say focus, focus your efforts in those two areas. And as, as, as Ross said, there are a number of, of areas in there that, that do require the planning commission to discuss and agree with. Okay? Before we, before we actually release this document. So, so, you know, we won't be coming into this, you know, just with a blank slate, you know, hoping to get, hoping to get, you know, random comments. We're going to try to focus the discussion on those things, which the planning commissioners really need to focus on. And, and that, and it will enable Ross to provide clear direction to the Smith Group so that we can move it forward however the planning commission, whatever guidance we provide, so. All right.
Then if we do approve to distribute or recommend to approve to the Township Board, it would go to Township Board November 6th. And then the 63-day review period would begin. And then that would come back in front of the new Township Board in late January, so.
Okay.
Final approval.
The new Township Board gives the final approval.
Correct.
Okay. What is the approval that the current Township Board is giving? Once we make a recommendation to issue, they approve the issuance? Is that what that is?
Yep.
Okay, so they're not, they're not really doing anything more than that?
No, they, hypothetically, they could send back to edits if they don't like whatever they see. They could send it back to Planning Commission and then we would have to send it back to them, but.
Where does, where does this go during the 60-day period?
It goes to the public. And then the public can review the document. We'll have the website with, of the draft that's open to the public. They can type right in their comments regarding the plan. And those, those comments will be incorporated into, it'll be like an appendix in the final draft of the master plan of.
Okay, will those, will those comments come back in front of planning before, before, for acceptance or rejection, basically?
Yeah, it could be, yeah, we could discuss all the comments the day of, you know, after the 63 days. Or we could hold, you know, meetings throughout that 63, three-day review period to kind of discuss comments or however we want to go about it.
Now, I, I don't, I don't think that it's a great idea to have, have edits put in after the planning commission has reviewed it, okay? Because it may.
Right.
Because again, it's our document.
Right.
Okay, so before, after the edits come in, you know, we should be reviewing those edits, accepting or rejecting those edits before they go into the master plan document, which then gets finally approved by the new Township Board. So let's, let's kind of work it that way.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, according to Brian and, you know, and Smith Group, there's hardly ever any comments that are made, but, you know, who knows? But, you know, if there's some, if there's a lot of comments that are made, we will definitely, I'll be sure to let the planning commission.
Well, you know what they say, plan for the worst, anticipate the best.
Right, right, right.
We'll see.
And then just a side note, going back to the R O one E stuff, zoning amendments, that discussion. We do have a $38,000 grant for zoning updates following the master plan approval. So we could use that, we can discuss this later. The grant lasts until 2026. So we can discuss how we want to go about zoning amendments after the master plan's approved. Whether, you know, Brian and I have been kicking around ideas, do we just focus on Macomb, Macomb Street? Do we, you know, do we want to amend something small with all of our single-family zoning district? You know, that sort of discussion can be had afterwards. But just want to let the planning commission know that there is a $38,000, you know, fund there for specifically zoning amendments.
Congratulations for finding the funds. Where did you get them?
Thank you. $38,000 doesn't go as far as it used to, so. So I thought it would be enough for a complete zoning update. But according to Mishda, they said that will maybe, you know, amend your, your accessory dwelling unit.
Well, I think, I think we're a little more efficient than that. But, but the, you know, the other point is what that says is we're going to have to be very clear about what our priorities are.
Right.
You can't do everything, you know, right? Pick the, pick the worst first to fix that.
Right.
Now, and again, the, the modification process that they talk about in the master plan is meant to be a 10-to-20-year operation.
Correct.
So, you know, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon.
Correct. And I'm, I might be a little biased because I'm with the DDA, but I think Macomb Street could use some love. So maybe that 38 grand could go towards really looking specifically at Macomb Street. But that could be a, a discussion for another day.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or questions on, on the master plan process? Okay, Chair's report. Brian, we have nothing in the hopper?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
But we're anticipating a special land use at some point.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's incomplete at this juncture. So I, I don't want to speculate as to whether that will be complete and ready for, certainly not for November 4th. I suppose there's a chance for an early meeting in December. That would be about as soon as that would happen.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.